Okay, well, we're at 8:00 AM, so I say let's roll. Good morning, everybody. I'm Stacy Wagner. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Kaiser Permanente here in Redwood City, and I'm Vice Chair of the Chamber's Business Government Relations Committee. Thank you for attending the Redwood City Samhitaught County Chamber of Commerce's first virtual city council candidate forum. We typically do these live, but in our COVID world, we're on video. Thank you for all of the candidates who are able to join us this morning. So I'm going to introduce our elected officials in attendance, as well as those representing elected officials. So I know we have Redwood City Mayor Diane Howard with us, Councilmember Alicia Aguirre, and Councilmember Janet Borgans, and then we also have Mario Rendon with Assemblymember Kevin Mullen's office. And Mario is our chamber chair, and he's doing an amazing job this year. He knows this. I've told him multiple times. So I'm going to introduce our candidates in alpha order, and I'll call out that Chris Rasmussen was not able to participate. And then I know that Is- or not Isabella Lizette Espinoza Garnica has not joined us, so I'll adjust as we move throughout the questions. So first, we have Alicia Aguirre, District 7, Janet Borgans, District 3, Isabella Chu, District 3, Jeff G., District 1, Nancy Radcliffe, District 1, Michael Smith, District 4, and Mark Woolahan, District 7. So we're going to alternate who begins first. I'll say what the question is and how much time you have, and just know who you follow, and I'll step in if you have a question about that. So Felicia is going to be our timekeeper, and when you get close to time, she's going to hold up a time card and stop card. And like I told the candidates before we began, I'm going to have to be a stickler on the time, because if I let one person go over, I have to let everybody go over, and then we run the risk of not being able to ask all of the candidates the questions. So we sent two questions to all of the candidates in advance, and we also asked attendees to submit the questions in advance, and again, to be sure that we have enough time to ask everybody the questions. So we did our best at consolidating the questions. So there's probably going to be some questions that were submitted that we weren't able to ask, but with the questions that we are asking, we feel we did a really first. We're going to stay in the rotation. We've disabled the chat for all of the attendees, and I'm going to ask that everybody stay on mute unless you're speaking just because of the background noise. And so we're going to go to our first question, and each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and make opening remarks, and we will start with Alicia.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Chamber, for holding this event for us this morning. You know, I've dedicated my life as a public servant, both as a professor, Department of Education in Detroit, in Seattle Community College District, teaching in Mexico City at the University in Argentina, and now at Quinata College for over 30 years, and also being an elected official for a number of years. So to me, that's very important, and even though we get a lot of confusion of what government does, actually, it works. It works because we believe in it and because it can make changes. And right now, we are in really the eye of the hurricane, you know, with everything happening. This has renewed my commitment to really serve our community, to look back and see all of the strengths and all the things that we were able to accomplish in the city of Redwood City, and try to continue to move forward and make it the city that we really love and cherish.
Thank you, Alicia. Janet, one minute.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Janet Borgans, running for District 3. I'm currently a Redwood City Council member. I just completed almost my fifth year. I sat on four boards and commissions, three boards and commissions, I applaud. And I kind of built my way up through the system, understanding what the city politics is all about, what the city government is all about, and I have been excited on where we have, how much we've accomplished, and how far we've come. I have lived in Redwood City since 1969 and in my current districts for 37 years. So I understand the nuances and the differences and the complexities of all of our community, and also understand that whether you're elected as a district representative, you still represent your city citywide. So I look forward to all the challenges we have ahead, and I think through the times that we've currently been experiencing, we have learned so much, and I look forward to working even harder with my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Isabella Chu, and I'm also running for District 3. I'm a public, you know, I've spent the last 25 years as a public health professional, and particularly in public health research. And really, that's the study of what leads to long flourishing lives and a reduction in inequality and inequities. And what I've really come to realize is there's a lot of things that actually do work and actually do bend the curve. And I think that that's, I really came to an interest in city government through the lens of public and population health. And so as, you know, the last five years have unfolded, we purchased our home in 2013, I really wanted to implement evidence-based policy to help my neighborhood in particular do better economically from a health standpoint and from an equity standpoint. I think I also realize increasingly how much city government impacts things that affect the health and everyday lives of the citizens in the city.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good morning, Stacy, Amy, Mario. Thank you, the Chamber. It's great to see everybody today. A lot's happened in the last two years, and you know, it's one thing to kind of deal with COVID and it's another thing to deal with what's coming next. I look forward to the questions today. Longtime resident of Redwood Shores, been there for 25 years, but more importantly, I've grown up in the area, grown up going to the Belmont Redwood Shore Schools, Fox, Ralston, and graduate at Carmont, back in the days when we had Marine World and before Oracle and before technology. You used to be able to hear the lions and tigers roar, no matter where you were in Belmont or Redwood Shores. And so I know the community and know the area. I know what the issues are that are out there in the shores and the challenges that we have ahead. And as our colleagues on the call this morning mentioned, while I'm running for District 1, we will represent Redwood City together, and we need to work together because there's a lot of hard work coming ahead of us as we emerge from the COVID pandemic and look forward to the questions this morning.
Thank you. Nancy?
Oh, good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here, and thank you for the Chamber for putting this on. If elected to the city council, I will bring numerous perspectives to the table. I have extensive background in retail. I've been a business owner, a renter, as well as a property owner landlord. 19 years on the planning commission makes me very familiar with how the city works, from the budget to the different boards and commissions. And through our general plan and the downtown precise plan, I embrace the use of public outreach to understand what our citizens need and want. Through my extensive nonprofit board experience, including two boards that interact with city departments, as well as mentoring the first-generation college student, I know how to work with people, build consensus, and get the job done. You may think I'm nice, but I'm not afraid to pull out the velvet glove. Right after we ratified the downtown precise plan, the county announced that they were going to build a new jail right next to McGuire. I started to know additional jails in Redwood City, and you'll notice there's no new jail down there.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm excited to have the opportunity to represent Redwood City's 4th district, to empower our community, and to face tough challenges that have settled onto the city. I truly believe that my experiences and expertise will help position Redwood City as a thriving hub for economic, cultural, and social impact, especially during this critical junction in history. After a successful career on the East Coast, I found my new home here in Redwood City, and the people of Redwood City have exceptionally warm and hospitable. I began my journey volunteering for the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula, and I would work as a Palm Park Neighborhood Co-Chair for about four years. As a planning commissioner, I have lived and breathed the critical issues related to housing, land use, and zoning here in Redwood City. And what I know is that Redwood City should have the ability to live and work here with dignity, with a promise of a better tomorrow. Also, as a small business operator, I understand the opportunities that are afforded to those who take risks to pursue their dreams. I'm focused on amplifying all the voices in our community, and I hope you will join me on the journey.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, yeah, thank you for having me be here today. So I want to say that I also was born and raised here. My family's rented in Redwood City my whole life. I grew up, you know, going to school here, playing sports here, working part-time jobs here. So I really am entrenched in this community and invested in this community. I graduated from Occidental College and played a couple of sports down there a couple of years ago, and then last year, played pro basketball in El Salvador, had pretty intermediate Spanish, which I had to use a lot while campaigning. And you know, this has always been like a dream of mine growing up, so I start in the city that I know best and the community that I love the most. So I really want this opportunity to help bring the community that I love into even better circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Amy will read Chris Rasmussen's statement.
Thank you, Stacy. Good morning. I regret that I cannot join you this morning. Like many of you, my wife Joanna and I are currently juggling the increased demands of parenting our children in the age of COVID-19. Our two youngest children, Evan, who is in third grade, and Emma, a sophomore, currently attend school via their virtual classrooms from home. Their attendance requires a stable internet connection and supervision, which prevent me from being with you this morning. I recently retired from the Redwood City Police Department, where I served as our community police officer, homeless outreach coordinator, and social media manager. I have had the opportunity to work with many of you over the years. My liaison work with the Chamber, Redwood City Improvement Association, and Downtown Business Group has included presentations and instruction on issues such as homelessness, business, security and safety, logistics, planning, and community events.
Thank you. So we gave the candidates two questions in advance, and the first question, you'll have one minute to address. Why should you be elected or reelected to office? Janet, please begin. You're on mute. We'll restart your time.
Sorry, so sorry. I know better. I'm sorry. As a current member, a current council member, I have always committed myself to putting in the time and hard work. My role is to thoroughly and thoughtfully balance the needs of business and neighborhoods, workers and residents, all while respecting the diversity and needs of our great community. We are responsible for the decisions and the policies that we make that ultimately affect all residents, whether you're a district representative or elected at large. To that, we are accountable for those decisions, so having staff educate us and then doing my own research is where I work the hardest. We not only need to protect our rich history, we need to plan for our growth, sustainability, environmentally, infrastructure capability, and economically. Every city has become a desirable place to want to live and create business. How we leverage this growth for the benefit of our community is where we need to place our efforts. I have the commitment and courage to move this conversation forward, and I'm in it for the long, hard road ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella?
So I think everybody on this call cares about our community, and if you ask them, what are the most pressing issues facing our city? I think we would all pretty much agree. It's things like housing, equity, the economy, COVID-19, et cetera. But I think where we differ is, do I consider, you know, do we consider these things to be existential threats? And I think if you consider things like climate change, the housing crisis, et cetera, to be an existential threat, you're willing to do a lot more to see it change. In example, my neighborhood hasn't really substantively changed since the 50s, and yet we've tripled in population. And I really believe in order to solve real problems, you have to make real changes. And I think that's what I'm really willing to do. I'm really willing to enact solutions that work for everyone, not just a small group of people who are particularly vocal. And I really believe I'm going to take an evidence-based, rigorous approach to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Stacy. You know, the past two years, a lot's changed, and with the current public health emergency, we've got to deal with the immediacy, but we really haven't realized the economic consequences yet. Number one is keeping our community safe. We've got to keep our community, our seniors, our children safe. And I've worked through this public health emergency. I'm in the office right now, and I bring with me the lessons learned of workplace protocols, job site safety, and schools and universities, and how to keep our children safe when they do go back to the classroom. Secondly, the economic consequences, we don't really know what they are right now. We're going to have to, some very difficult decisions ahead of us once we realize what is ahead of us. There's not going to be a federal bailout, someone said, you know, anything aspirational for the federal government to help us. Third, there are institutional barriers, specific engagement, and I will champion breaking those down and getting our people involved. But most importantly, experience matters. I've been there. I've made the hard decisions. I'm willing to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Is Nancy before me?
I was testing, and you all passed. Well, Michael, Nancy, you're next. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Thanks, Stacy. So I really think that the council really needs to go out and do a listening campaign with the community. We all assume we know what's best, but I think going out and talking one-on-one and in small groups, you really start to understand what is important to our citizens. In a couple of my recent discussions, it's been brought up, public safety. So that's very much on the minds of our citizens of, if there's public unrest, how are we going to be taken care of? And I agree with the speakers before me that safety of our citizens is paramount. We also really need to take some hard look at the budget, and that we're going to learn through our listing campaign, what people really want to say, what's really important to them. I think things like our libraries and our parks that are open to all citizens are very important to keep a healthy, robust structure.
Michael?
Thank you so much. So as I mentioned previously, I truly believe that my experience and expertise make me well-suited to play the role of Redwood City Council representing District 4. I have an undergraduate degree from Yale in political science and economics, as well as an MBA from NYU Stern in finance and strategy. I worked for many large and medium-sized companies, including American Express, Samsung, and my own boutique consulting firm called BNI Advisors at the moment. I have three important topics and issues that I am really focused on. As I mentioned, I'm a planning commissioner in Redwood City, and I believe that making it affordable and possible to stay here is a critical role for any city councillor. Second, I believe that empowering our youth through transportation policy, as well as jobs training policy and enablement, is a critical function for any city councillor to be able to move into. And finally, I believe as a small business person, we as a city should be focusing on ways to help our small businesses to thrive to so that they can support the folks pushed to the margin in our community. Thank you.
Mark?
My family has rented in Redwood City my whole life. I know the history of the city, but I also have a vision for its future. I am also extremely honest. This integrity has partly been fostered through working at the Rikers Center, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, where one of the three core values is honest communication. Additionally, I have an academically rigorous degree from Occidental College, the same school Obama attended, where I studied kinesiology and economics. Furthermore, I have a tremendous work ethic, which I have won awards for on the field and in the classroom. Moreover, from growing up in a single-parent home, to running track in Jamaica with the Usain Bolt, to playing professional basketball in El Salvador, to working at a nonprofit that serves people of all backgrounds, I have had an eclectic life experience that allows me to connect with people from all walks of life. Most importantly, I am passionate and really want this opportunity to serve the community. My campaign is purely grassroots. I hope you'll support me in bringing a fresh and holistic perspective to city hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I've been serving this community. One of the things I've learned, especially through this pandemic, is how important it is to have collaborations and partnerships. We wouldn't have been able to get as far as we have in serving our community, rental assistance, the food and security folks, if it weren't for public-private partnerships. It's, what I see in Samhitaught County and Redwood City as a leader is that we come together, and we bring people together to find solutions. Money has been flowing through. I was talking to Terry Chin about how money has been coming into our rental assistance program. That's what we want, and that's what I think I bring to this community, is knowing those issues, being able to reach out to people, being able to have collaborations. You know, I've been a community leader. I'm a professor at Quinata College. I see the needs every day. And being able to form those students to be our future leaders is really important to me.
Thank you. Our second prepared question that we sent to all of the candidates, you'll have one minute to answer. What role will you play on the city council to ensure the business community thrives in Redwood City, especially given the significant challenges due to COVID-19? Isabella, please begin.
So last night, I believe Raj Chetty posted an article about this exact topic. And what he's found is that even if the state allows businesses to open up, until people aren't afraid of COVID, they're not going back. And so what I would bring to the council is the ability to really access the best evidence on how to bend the COVID curve, to help people to feel safe so that they can return to their businesses. The second thing I really want to advance is the ability of, you know, my neighbors to work from home, just like people with desk jobs can. I would love to see more flexibility and being able to have small mom-and-pop businesses in garages and driveways. I think there are a lot of creative things we can do to allow the economy to rebound safely, and so that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Stacy. As someone who's responsible for employees, I have 70 employees and seven offices throughout the state. Keeping everybody safe at work is number one. Just as important, keeping them employed and keeping them employed with benefits. I understand what it takes to run a business. I understand exactly what the concerns are about the future economy. Redwood City needs to be proactive. What that means is, while there may not be a bailout for the city budget, there will definitely be a federal stimulus package on infrastructure. We need to get our major infrastructure projects shovel-ready, whether that be the 101 Woodside Road, Bayfront Canal, Caltrain Great Separations. We need to get those construction jobs flowing, because we've seen, and the studies have proven, for every dollar spent on construction, it ripples through the economy seven to eight times. In addition, we need to get our housing projects prioritized and moving so that we can create good-paying jobs, keep people employed, and get businesses up and running again. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. Nancy?
Thanks, Stacy. So I believe that being outdoors is with us to stay. And I was on Castro Street yesterday, and they have done a fabulous job of creating street closures and outdoor dining. It's very enticing. We've been talking about closing Broadway for decades, actually. So, and we're fortunate that we have Marshall Street that's parallel, so it doesn't embed traffic too much. We've got a strong partner with the Redwood City Improvement Association. They've already done great things with our downtown. We have the Downtown Business Group, and we have two great development projects that are in the pipeline, the Tisman Spare and the Lane Project at either end of our Broadway. So let's get all these people in a room and talk about what we can do with these three to four blocks of downtown and really make it an attractive, enticing place to go.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I believe small business is the lifeblood of the Redwood City community. During my time in Redwood City, I've known many numerous unique and well-run small businesses in the area. Unfortunately, many of them have been challenged by the same market forces that are impacting renters and homeowners, and has also been impacted by COVID-19. In the past two years, I've seen too many small businesses close their doors permanently. Even beyond these small business owners, they're being challenged to navigate rising rents, changing demographics, and national competitive entrance. I believe there are many options to enable our small businesses in Redwood City. For example, I think it could be very easy to implement a small business facade improvement program. This type of program would allow small business owners to negotiate with their landlords for concessions on leasing with this grant from the city. If elected to city council, I would work diligently with the city's staff, who are responsible for economic empowerment, to uncover these types of opportunities.
Thank you. Mark?
I've talked to many local restaurant owners about their experiences in dealing with the city. One recurring theme has been the difficulty in getting permit applications processed. Part of this increased difficulty and inefficiency is due to the city's approach in outsourcing the service. The contracted company responsible for the service is not local, lacking a sense of the community, and is overwhelmed with requests. Therefore, I will strive to return the service to being conducted internally. This may help regain efficiency and simplicity for businesses as they prepare to adapt to changing COVID restrictions. I also seek to gauge interest and feasibility in maintaining downtown street closures post-COVID to promote dining and leisure. In general, I plan on making a concerted effort in representing local businesses. I want local business owners and workers to feel comfortable communicating their concerns to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
The first thing we need to do to help our businesses thrive is be customers, right? Be clients, be, you know, go to the restaurants, go to the little shops, and really support them. I know when we have a new business in town, I always make sure that I go in and I introduce myself and ask what we need. We did this when COVID started as a city, and we need to continue to do that, checking in on our businesses. We have, you know, three great organizations. The best one being, the one that we're working with today is the Chamber, our CIA Downtown Business Group. There are organizations there that really want to help, you know, our small businesses thrive. And one of the things we've been able to do is to pack some of the incentives to make sure that some of them can open up. The city's been able to, you know, open up some of the streets, you know, to do things outside. The new normal is going to be masks. You know, what are we doing with, how are we, you know, really being able to work with that within our small businesses? But if we're not there to support them and make sure that we share that information and ask those people, what do you need as a city? We need to continue to do that.
Thank you. Janet?
So the week of March 16th, 2020, will be a time in our lives that we'll never forget. Dr. Stark Morrow ordered Samhitaught County to shelter in place, and our lives were upside down and inside out. In the days, weeks, months since then, county board of supervisors, along with, and I'm going to name them, Regina Van Brunt, Downtown Business Group, Amy Buckmaster, Felicia Vasquez, Maggie Fahey, the board, and so many Chamber members have proven Chamber of Commerce is essential to Redwood City. And added to this list, Sam Seda, Roseanne Faust, and Danny Gasparini, you are the glue. We will need to double down on this partnership with the Chamber, county business community, and city to ensure our recovery strategy is about thriving, not just surviving this economic recession that we will see. I want a seat at this table. I am ready to roll up my sleeves, do the hard work, whatever it will take, to keep us in the game and keep our businesses totally active. What is that going to look like? We might help, we might have to help some of our business slowly.
Okay, so for our next round of questions, each candidate will have 30 seconds to answer. Will you abide by the campaign spending cap? Why or why not? Jeff, please begin.
I have agreed to abide by the voluntary campaign expenditure limit. Yes.
Thank you. Nancy?
Absolutely. Yes, I abide by it.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I am abiding by it.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes, not only am I abiding by it, but I filed the 470, Form 470, so I'm not receiving campaign contributions, and I cannot exceed $2,000 in my budget. So everything in my campaign is unbiased and clear and transparent and grassroots.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's the important thing to do to really level the field of all of us running and making sure there's, it's equitable and that we can represent our districts.
Thank you. Janet?
Absolutely. I was on the legislative committee that actually crafted the language for this, and I absolutely think it is the right direction to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella?
Absolutely, and I think it's a very good thing. I think it's really democratized the ability to run and to contribute.
Thank you. Well, we didn't need 30 seconds for that question. Okay. So for the next question, you'll also have 30 seconds to answer. Are you for or against Prop 15, the split role property tax initiative that will be on the ballot in November? Nancy, please begin.
Thank you, Stacy. I am absolutely against the split role. It, I think it will, in the long run, hurt the small businesses. It, I think it will, in the long run, hurt the small businesses. Any increase in the property tax is absolutely going to be passed on to the renter of the small business, and that law will be passed on to the consumer. So it doesn't do any of us any good.
Thank you. Michael?
I'm for Prop 15. I actually believe that kind of creating some area where we can understand the difference between small and large businesses is going to be extremely important. I think that large businesses should be helping to pay their fair share during this COVID-19 crisis that we're currently experiencing.
Thank you. Mark?
I still have to investigate this further, but I would kind of piggyback on what Michael said in that I think that large corporations do need to pay their fair share, and I think they can easily afford to do so. I wouldn't want to see small businesses be hindered. So just making sure that the prop does sufficiently protect small businesses while keeping large corporations accountable.
Thank you. Alicia?
You know, as an educator, I do believe what Prop 15 wants to help with our children and our education. I think that when we look at the assessment, it'll really be with larger corporations and not the small businesses. And that's the way I've interpreted it.
Janet?
I actually have looked a little at this, and I do agree that, that it does separate the two out. I would not want to have a proposition that, or a law that says our small business is going to be heavily impacted. But I do believe that it is time for us to do a revisit on this, and I'm only, yes, I'm hoping that our small business won't be impacted, but definitely it is time for us to revisit this. Yes.
Thank you. Isabella?
I'm absolutely for Prop 15. And as I understand it, the two businesses that will be primarily impacted are Disney and Chevron. They can certainly afford to pay more taxes, and they're just, it's just their fair share. And also, the prop has a very clear carve-out for small businesses. I don't believe that this is going to negatively impact our small businesses, and it may in fact help them by reducing the pressure on them.
Thank you. Jeff?
My leaning is against it. I understand exactly where the challenges are and the loopholes are for commercial property owners. But I'm not sure this is the right solution for it. With Prop 13, there is a, there is a reason for it. Absolutely, yes. But the growing inequities, even in private homeownership, between homeowners that were bought their home 30 years ago and knew, or continues to grow, and we need to find a better solution to keep people in our homes and have everyone, including commercial property owners, pay their fair share.
Thank you. For our next round of questions, each candidate will have one minute to answer. What role will you play in addressing racism? Let's see, I think Nancy goes first on this one, or no, Michael goes first. Sorry, I'm out of order because Lizette's not here. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the question. I think that the question of inequity in Redwood City is critically important. I think that comes into play for a few, in a number of ways. First, I think representation is critical. I think having adequate representation of our communities of color on boards and commissions, as well as the city council, is critically important to maintaining and growing equity within our community. I also think that comprehensive police reform is something that we should be looking at in a full-throated way from a council level and from a budget, budgeting perspective as well. I think that this will help to create equity in terms of the services that are delivered by our city. And finally, I believe that having a robust women and minority-owned business program within the city procurement process is critical. I think we can enable many of the folks in our city who are people of color who own small businesses to be able to thrive and make Redwood City their home on a continuous basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, so to address activity, I plan on talking to people of all different backgrounds, so different neighborhoods in the city. I've already started doing that as I, as I go on this campaign trail. But I also want to set up official communication and dialogue platforms. I think the recent police talkings were a good start, but I think that should be a regularly, a regular thing. You know, a monthly police town hall is something that I would like to set up for the community. Also, just, not just for the police, but all the departments and agencies within the city. I would like to see that they are diversely staffed and also being receptive, receptive, inclusive, and accountable. I would also like to see for, for the police, a citizens oversight committee, and definitely open to that, and substantiated findings of racism, homophobia, sexism made public.
Thank you. Alicia?
This issue is so ingrained in our society that it is a challenge, and we have to really look at it in many different ways. For one, the city council, where I'm on the committee, that's looking at the equity lens and making sure that that is the overarching factor into all of our goals, our strategic, whether it's housing, transportation, children and youth. You know, we need to continue the community dialogues. They're a good start. But we need to make sure that we reach out to the folks that haven't been able to be a part of it. And then we have to look at what does our policy look like in all of our departments, not just the police department? What do they look like with that equity lens? And how can we shape that? And definitely, we need to get more folks that look like our community, that are in positions of leadership that are at the table, both on the city council, boards, committees, and commissions, and leaderships, and the chamber, in all of the areas. We need to make sure that folks are representing those small businesses, and they're coming from different ethnic backgrounds and diverse racial backgrounds, but embracing it as part of our goals in Redwood City.
Janet?
Question. So for me, it has to become with self-analyzing. We have to do an evaluation of how we approach diversity and discrimination and inequities, and we need to address inherent biases. We need to admit it exists, and we need to prove our commitment to what we're going to do and change because of it. How we look at our budgets, staffing, housing, banking, policing. I've not walked in those shoes. The shoes I walk in are the shoes of an ally. I am going to double down on my commitment to be an ally for justice and change in my community of color. I really do believe that we need to rip off that Band-Aid and see exactly what we need to fix. But until we do that, we don't know what it is we're talking about we need to fix. So let's just get it all out on the table, have these hard, deep-dive conversations, and we can make this. We can make this a great community that it already is. But I do believe we all need to be at the table for this, and we all need to do a personal deep dive on what it means to us.
Thank you. Isabella?
So in the past few years, we've made three changes that have already hugely helped representation and participation. That's moving to even-year elections, going to district elections, and online, and, you know, recently, online participation. And I think what those, those three things didn't cost us anything. But what they taught us is that people do want to participate, people do want to engage. And by making simple changes, we can actually really have much greater participation. And I think we need to look and say, what are other simple things we can do that would hugely increase participation? For example, holding meetings in Spanish and Chinese and other languages that are well-represented in Redwood City. I think we may need to make a concerted effort to recruit a pipeline of individuals from underrepresented minorities to boards and commissions, rather than just kind of going through who shows up. And finally, we do need to reimagine the police so that there is both representation and close scrutiny of activities and a just approach.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Stacy. You know, here we are, 2020, San Mateo County, California, and it's sad that racism still exists in our community. We saw it earlier this year when COVID launched its face here in the region with xenophobia. We saw it with Black Lives Matter. We saw, and we still see it with the suppression, with the census, with the Latinx community. We need to work and build bridges across all communities to build diversity, a pipeline of candidates, diversify our BCCs, diversify our workforce. Because everyone that comes to the table has different viewpoints, and we're richer together, and those viewpoints come together and have a conversation. I'm willing to champion that. I wasn't successful when I previously served on council, but I know where those institutional barriers are. I was honored to be on a regional town hall last week with Congresswomen Spear, DeSalne, and Lee, with Black Lives Matter, Alicia Garza, and Teresa Gonzalez, to talk about race in America, and those conversations are critical to move forward.
Nancy?
Thank you, Stacy. Great points by all of my fellow candidates. Could not agree more. I think one thing the city can do is we can form a commission on equity. We have a lot of different boards and commissions that help staff in the city through different aspects of our community. And a commission on equity would be another avenue for that. How, also, what are the barriers for our different citizens to come onto a commission? Do we need to look at, we always have our commission meetings at night. Is that a barrier for these people? You know, let's talk about why they are not stepping forward and being involved. So I think that's really important.
Thank you. For our next question, you'll have two minutes to answer. If elected or re-elected, what are your top three priorities? Mark, please begin. You're on mute.
Sorry, my connection was bad. But my top three priorities would be equity, housing, and environmental, and the environment. Equity, first and foremost, we need to have, that's just a foundational, fundamental, just, just ethical right that we, everybody needs to have, be treated equally, and to be respected and to be, to be valued. And to feel comfortable that they can improve their circumstances if they decide to, if they put in the right direction and energy. I think that the, oh gosh, okay, I think that the housing, like I said, that's really dear to me. Not only just supporting renters, but also supporting homeowners and also people without homes, the homeless as well. And then the environment is a problem that is, that needs to be addressed immediately, and we need to do our part and more so.
Thank you. Alicia?
Consistent with the city council, my top three priorities are housing, children and youth, and transportation. Let me talk about housing. We've been able to do more housing in Redwood City than almost any other city on the peninsula. Not only moderate housing, but now we have, actually, in the past with opportunities that we had from the state government, we were able to build a lot of affordable housing and have the most affordable housing of any other city. We need to do a lot more, and we need to do low-income and very, very low-income. And also folks that, you know, don't meet that threshold of, I only made, I made this much money, but I can't buy and I can't rent. So we have to look at those opportunities with adding ADUs and adding duplex and others. As far as children and youth, we want to make sure that we have opportunities that are entertaining, that are safe. Want to make sure we have childcare centers. And lastly, on transportation, you know, it's having sidewalks, you know, safe streets, cyclists, and connecting all those to our public transportation.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't tell if the screen froze with the internet connection. Thank you. Janet?
Thank you for this question. So our top three strategic priorities right now are housing, children and youth, and transportation. And I feel that those right now are going to be stronger than ever. So I definitely will support housing and how we look at that. I wanted to bring on a conversation about, we keep talking about affordable housing, and we build apartments in that vein. I really want to look at affordable homeownership opportunities for our low-income community because housing stability is homeownership. You can stay in your community. You don't worry about how that rent goes up and down. Children and youth, we need to build far more childcare centers so that we actually can help our families feel safe and, and affordable childcare opportunities. And then transportation, we need to support the survival of Caltrain. We have got to make sure that we provide an interconnected system so that we can get out of our cars. The way to climate change and the way to protect our climate is to get out of our automobiles. We can do that if we get behind the transportation entity that we expect to do that.
Okay, I think what happened, I changed this one up. Initially, we were only going to give one minute for the question, and I changed it to two minutes because we were running a little ahead. So I think what I want to do is go back to Mark, give you another minute to let you finish. We'll go back to Janet, give you a minute, and then we'll, we'll keep rolling, and we'll act like it's all normal.
Thank you. Yeah, that really threw me off. I was like, oh, I guess I misheard her.
I apologize.
No, no, thank you for giving me the opportunity again. So yeah, I just thought equity would be my, my top priority, and just ensuring that everybody in the community has like an equal playing field and can, you know, call on the police and be able to be dealt fairly, and not just the police, but, you know, be able to go to school and be able to go to a good school with a quality education, regardless of where they are in the, in the neighborhood, or regardless of what their socioeconomic background is. And just overall, in the community, having a very inclusive, diverse culture. For the, my second priority would be housing. Is it two minutes? It's two minutes, right?
Well, you got one minute, and we were giving you one more minute. Because you got cut off after.
Okay, okay. Housing, like I said, okay, sorry. Housing, like I said, is another high priority for me. I really seek to lower the rent rate. And then lastly, the environment, you know, that's a, that's an ongoing pandemic that has no really end in sight. So we really have to do our part.
Thank you. So Alicia, we're going to give you one minute to address the question because you already got a partial minute. You're on mute.
Thank you. I think I mentioned the three areas of importance to me and priority. But what I was, what I was not able to complete is that all of these have to be looked through an equity lens. So we really have to look at what we're really facing today. We can have a lot of goals and trend, goals and priorities. But if we don't look at what we really need to address today, we're really not looking at reality. What are we looking at? Equity. We're looking at COVID. We're looking, and now the smoke again is going to be bad for our families, for a lot of our youth, for seniors. So making sure that net equity lens is more than, than just looking at diverse community, diverse populations. It's looking at our children. It's looking at our small businesses, and it's looking especially at our seniors. So being able to have that, I see it as an umbrella to everything else that we're going to do with all of the priorities that we are seeking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're back on track. So Janet, you have two minutes to address what your top three priorities are.
Okay, so I did get a minute already. So I get a minute.
Thanks for being, yes, so yeah, you get one.
You don't need to hear me talk anymore. So I think what I finished with, I started to, to finish with, was climate change. And I think it's really important that as we look at how we grow and develop our community, we really pay attention to climate change. It's obvious to all of us that we definitely have a crisis going on. And so I need to, to really commit to looking at how we develop around our community and what that means and what that looks like, and how we protect our climate for the future of our generations. It is important. It is something we can no longer ignore. And we need to look at that through the lens of everything that we're doing in our community, including the equity lens, the development lens, where we place buildings, what products we use when we do that. And so I am excited to be sitting on those committees that actually are having those conversations. And I look forward to learning even more and bringing it back to my constituents on how we can be that partner.
Thank you. Isabella?
So my top three priorities are housing, transportation, and equity. So housing specifically, I want to see a wider variety of affordable housing and greater housing affordability. And the way you do that is you change zoning to allow people to adapt their plot to accommodate more people. And there are really innovative programs in places like Oregon, Minnesota, and actually Vancouver, which hugely, hugely increase both ownership opportunities and the variety and the affordability of rental. So I'd love to see us imitate some of these things, and they, they preserve the charm of neighborhoods. They just don't keep them exactly the way they were in the 50s. The second thing is transportation. I primarily take the bus, the train, and ride my bike. And it's dangerous and stressful to get from the south side of Redwood City to downtown. We should be able to transverse that in something besides a car. And we have to make it pleasant and practical to get around in something besides a car. Or we're never going to see a change in those behaviors. And I really want to push for transportation equity to places with lots of people and very little bit, very little public transportation, such as the south side of Redwood City. The third is equity. And really, I'm looking at housing and transportation through the lens of equity, health and opportunity. So the, the biggest driver of poverty and even wealth inequality in the United States right now is, is homeownership and land ownership. And so when we created a situation where people cannot own a home, they can't find a rental they can afford, this is a huge driver of poverty and inequality. So by addressing the two things, we take a huge dent in inequality, in, in things that cause people to have poor health. And finally, in climate change, we cannot solve climate change if we don't change our cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
A lot of the themes are going to be very similar, but safety is number one for me and community safety. We spent a lot of time talking about COVID, but there's going to be more to it. I think Alyssa mentioned it in her comments. Taking care of our seniors, the wildfires, air quality, the cooling centers. And as our schools go through considering how to open, whether it be fully online, a hybrid model, we need to help support our community so that our seniors, our children and our community stay safe with lessons learned from across the region, across the country. Social justice, we've talked about that briefly, but it is very real. There are systemic and there are institutional barriers to engagement, participation and to achievement. And we've got to identify them and they're not going to be easy conversations, but I'm willing to lead and champion those conversations and break down those barriers. Housing, we need more housing in the region. There's nothing that, you know, COVID has also shown a bright light on that is we need housing at all levels, especially affordable, transitional and supportive housing. I've joined the board directors on a nonprofit housing developer. We have 5,000 units of affordable, transitional and supportive housing in place with onsite services, 1,200 units in the pipeline and we're capacity billing to deliver 4,000 more units in the next five years. Just as importantly, many of my projects have kept moving forward during the pandemic. 100% affordable housing project in the East Bay, memory care project and I'm very proud of a workforce project in the Tenderloin in San Francisco and ownership project in South San Francisco of which 20% of the units will be so below market and none of those projects have any public taxpayer dollars involved. Lastly, the most important thing to do is we have some hard decisions ahead of us and what we need to do to help our economy return and our community thrive and willing to make those hard choices ahead of us.
Nancy?
Thank you. So my three priorities would be safety, budget and housing. None of this can go forward if our citizens do not feel safe. And in some of my reach out recently, civil discourse has really become something that is forefront in a lot of people's minds. So having a good relationship with our police as well as the rest of the community will bring safety, a safe feeling. And so I think that's very important for us. Budget, going forward, we're really going to have to reprioritize our budget. We really do not know the ramifications yet of all of this COVID-19 and that's still coming to us, but the city is going to have to look at how we spend our money and what our priorities are. So there's going to be a reprioritizing of budget. Housing, we've all talked about this. We have very little middle housing and so that's an issue that needs to be brought forward. We still need much more affordable housing. And it, housing ownership, that's, that brings such security to people that's really something that we have to help and promote. Having our housing downtown during, by our TOD, transit oriented development, is very important so that the people can not use their cars. And it's very important that we, from a climate aspect, we start thinking about that and how the housing, transportation all interacts together. So it's, it's a big bucket that needs to be sorted through.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you so much. So my three priority areas are of course housing, as everyone has mentioned already, support for youth programs and youth in general in our community. And finally, small business enablement. So let me start with the housing. So you know, as a planning commissioner and most importantly, as a renter, I understand what it's like to be able to pay the rent every month. We need additional housing stock for renters. This means partnering and collaborating with real estate developers, partnering with housing nonprofits and supporting missing middle housing stock development, which includes duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. We also need to be studying our renter protection policy on an ongoing basis. And finally, appropriately accommodating land use and development policy to make it easier for us to bring affordable housing to our community. I truly believe that. So our, my second point again is youth. And it's not just about infants and children, which of course are important parts of our community, but it's about our older teens and our young adults. As a marketing and small business professor at Canyatta College, I see the worry on many of the faces of our young adults, as I mentioned before, who don't have opportunities to stay here. And I think that means that we need to be pushing forward policy around transportation on a regional level, but also on a local level. I've been saying that what is it like to have a dedicated board position on Samtrans for someone under the age of 25 who rides the transportation services that our region holds? Also workforce development policy, let's bring the workforce development programs into our communities. They don't need to be up in San Mateo where folks can't get to them if they don't have vehicles. And finally, small business, as I mentioned, I really want to focus on enabling our small businesses with small incremental steps like the facade improvement program, but absolutely studying what it is like to put it together of Redwood City Small Business Procurement Program in alignment with a procurement program that we have currently. Thank you.
So we've almost concluded this morning's candidate forum and each candidate will now have two minutes for closing remarks and we'll start with Alicia.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you to all my colleagues on this forum today. You know, I've been a resident in Redwood City for over 30 years. I'm a professor. I'm a community volunteer, you know, former mayor, council member. And I've gone through a lot of the difficult and challenging times and crises that we had in our city and, and how we've been able to rebuild with what I continue to say are opportunities of partnerships, working with our businesses, with, with our nonprofits, which are very important that we continue to embrace and bring in and to be part of the solutions that we're looking at as in policies. You know, leadership means that you are bringing others forward. I embrace the opportunity to bring community members from every corner to continue to, these dialogues with us to move forward. And the challenge that we have and the challenges that we don't know that we have, right? What are they going to look like? What is recovery going to look like in 2021? Even though I'm working with the county and the city and a lot of the recovery committees, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. And what will the economy look like? What will small businesses, what is the new definition? They've reinvented themselves, teachers have reinvented themselves, students have reinvented themselves. What is that going to look like when we are able to return and what does return mean? So I want to be part of that process. I want to make sure that everyone is part of that process, including our seniors, our youth, our children. Our youth are so important. I love the fact that we have a commission that is part of, you know, bringing them forward, really preparing them for tomorrow, to be in the seats that we are seeking for today. So to me, that's very important to bring the community forward in all of the issues and all of the challenges, and we have many. But all those challenges equate to opportunities. And how do we turn that around to make sure that our city always continues to be number one? You know, we pride ourselves in being the first or the, you know, in doing things or the one that's done the most. And I want to make sure that we are the first in making sure that everything is equitable with that lens through all of the priorities that we have.
Thank you. Janet?
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, Chamber, for having this event. You heard me say earlier that we, we need to look at thriving, not just surviving. And so to do that, we're going to have to think outside that box. And Redwood City's economic recovery demands we build more housing, especially affordable housing. But we leverage that affordable housing when we have the mixed use projects that fund our community benefits and our affordable housing. This is how we're going to get our workers back downtown so our small businesses can get their customers back and they, therefore they survive. We prioritize childcare and equity issues like minimum wage. We need to look for new revenue sources because we are going to lose some revenue sources, so we have to look for new sources. That could be retail cannabis. We need to look and actually see exactly what that's going to bring to our community. If we're going to accomplish any of our climate action initiative goals, we need to make sure that we are serious about the changes that we have before us and the opportunities to bring this back to ourselves and adapt. We need to adapt to those changes and say, we are willing to make those hard changes. We are willing to make those hard decisions. I've been on the council for five years and I have seen enormous changes in our city. And I am so excited to see that our community is coming together. Yes, we have some differences and there have been some adversities and there have been some hard discussions, but we are all at the table for the betterment of Redwood City. I say, let's sit down, break bread, have these hard conversations, listen to each other, don't just see someone talk. Let's listen and take those suggestions and move forward on how we continue to make this city great. Does that mean we have to have those hard conversations and admit that there are some things we need to change? Absolutely. So let's just get on with it and let's just do it. We are all ready to accomplish that. We are ready as a city. Redwood City, you got this. Chamber of Commerce, thank you for having this forum.
Thank you. Isabella?
So I'm a public health person, so I don't have a huge business background, but, but two things are true. There's a, there's a famous fancy physician named Nigam Shah at Stanford. And I'll never forget a quote, he said, "The best treatment for tuberculosis is to give somebody a job." The second thing is that the most compelling evidence that I've seen on the relationship between housing, health and equity is actually presented by a rock star economist named Raj Chetty. And so because I'm a person who's trying to optimize the health and equity of our city and the wellbeing of the entire population, I see the Chamber of Commerce and a thriving economy is absolutely central to that. The best thing you can do to, for people's health and their, is to give them opportunity. This is why I'm so hung up on housing because I firmly believe that the most powerful engine we have for equity and opportunity and health is to let people live in places where they can access the economy. This is why transportation is so important because the biggest panacea we have for health besides money or jobs, I should say, not money, but jobs, is the ability to walk. And so when we get people out of their cars, it gets them walking and it's, it does a huge amount for public health. These things also happen to really help the economy. Cars are expensive, they're bulky, they're loud, they make cities boring and ugly and they directly compete with humans for places to have businesses and places to live. So the more we can get people out of their cars, the better the economy will do and for sure, the better the humans in the economy will do. I want to work with people who are good at business and who do understand business. I think one of the things I bring to the table is the ability to access expertise and to defer to expertise and listen to people who've really thought things through and have a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Stacy. You know, when I served on the council previously, I would characterize that service as exciting, thrilling and humbling altogether. And sometimes within the, in 15 minutes, you go from up to down and in the middle and in between. And early in my terms of service, someone tried to criticize me and calling me a pragmatist. We have some serious challenges in our community, not just in Redwood City, but in the county and across the region, that we didn't create necessarily by ourselves. They came to us, but we are the recipients of it and we need to work hard together. I've demonstrated I can work together with the council and the county and across the region to solve some of the biggest and most difficult problems that we have. I'm willing to be able to bring that back because I love Redwood City. I love our community and I think I can help bring some solutions, whether it be innovative housing construction from prefabrication, manufactured housing, new construction techniques, to lower the cost of housing from 500,000 to 900,000 a unit, maybe 300 to 400,000. That will make a huge difference in how we support our communities with new housing. We've got to support our seniors. I mean, I've grown up in Belmont and Redwood Shores. I was out the other day and saw a high school classmate with her mom in her wheelchair. We began a conversation about the challenges she has as a senior, trying to stay in her house and live in our community and stay in her house safely. We need to support our youth because they are concerned about their future. And how much are we mortgaging their future between the environment and between the debt we're taking on to support our community through this pandemic? I love Redwood City. I love who we are. I love the challenges in front of us and I'm willing to serve again. And Stacy, Amy, Mario, thank you and everyone that's online for joining us this morning. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Nancy?
Thank you, Stacy. A long time Redwood City resident and actually my family involvement goes back generations. So there's definitely a sweet spot for Redwood City in my heart, especially the port. But I have had a career as in small business most of my life. I've not only managed different retail stores, I've owned my own retail store, so I understand the small business perspective. I've also worked in property management and am a renter. So I understand not only a renter's point of view, but a property owner's point of view. So I think these are things that I bring to the table. We really have to start listening to all of our community. As all of the candidates said, we need to concentrate on all ages of our community and all types of housing aspects. So going forward, this will, it'll be a lot of challenges that we have to overcome in communication, trusting each other, building equity and becoming a whole community once again. I think that our transportation is extremely important. We need to really get behind a community transportation system that allows everyone to access all of downtown, all of the different neighborhoods. Right now, it's very hard to bike or walk in some of our neighborhoods. I know this is always a pipe dream, but I still love the idea of the streetcar and would love to see that come to fruition. But I also want to go forward and make this, continue to make this community a great community that it is. I want to thank you, Stacy, for moderating and for the chamber for having us all here today and everyone for taking their time out of their morning to be here and listen to us.
Michael?
Thank you. I want to thank, of course, the chamber for having all of us, Stacy, Felicia, Maggie, Amy, you all have done a great job with this virtual panel, so I want to thank you so much. Again, my name is Michael. I am a Redwood City resident. I'm the Palm Park neighborhood co-chair and a planning commissioner for the city of Redwood City. And I'm hoping to have the opportunity to represent District Four of Redwood City. You know, I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to possibly represent the members of my district as a member of the city council. For as long as I can remember, I've been passionate about public and community service and I've tried to bring value to the Redwood City community since I joined. I believe that I'll be effective advocate for my district, but of course, Redwood City as a whole. You know, District Four has been a district that has historically been underrepresented and unheard in our community. And I believe that that doesn't need to be the case for District Four any longer. We're a community of essential workers, retirees, apartment dwellers, renters, communities of color and young people. And I believe that these communities have unique issues that are, can be uniquely addressed through representation from District Four. As I mentioned already, I have a few critical policy areas, but I'm also interested in issues around homelessness, transportation, climate change and community building. All of these things I hope to address as a city councilman representing District Four. I would be honored to have the opportunity to serve as Redwood City's District Four city councilman. And I'm thrilled to have each of one of you on this journey with me. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but it is work in service of enabling and bettering a Redwood City for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I think that I would be a good council member. I, like I said, I was born and raised in Rose City. I know this community, I know what it was 26 years ago and I know what it is today. And I think some of that culture that Redwood City had that was very communal, I think it has been lost a little bit and kind of more of a corporate vibe now. So I would like to try to reinstate that inclusive culture of people from all different ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and be able to have that hometown feeling once again. Like I said, I'm very relatable, you know, I rented here, you know. Like I said, I'm very relatable, you know, I rented here, you know, I have a dad that's seven years old that has no foreseeable retirement, that also rents here. I have homeless family members that are in shelters, and they actually are doing really well because of those shelters. So I really want to support shelters going forward. You know, just for example, you know, three weeks ago, and this is not an unusual day for me, in the morning, I campaigned, walking to people on the street, talking, walking on the street, talking to people, and then I played, you know, basketball and rebounded for NBA Hall of Famer that, like, future Hall of Famer, first ballot easy, that will, is trying to get back to the league. And then in the evening, I painted curbs for money. And so I, I worked with hundredaires to millionaires, black to white, professional athletes to disabled veterans, like special needs students to tech CEOs. So I'm able to really connect with people from all different backgrounds. And not only that, but I'm very passionate in serving this community, I really want to help this community. And more importantly, I have the ideas to help this community and the ability to realize them. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our city council candidate forum. On behalf of the Redwood City-San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce, thank you to all of the candidates for participating this morning. Thank you to everyone who joined us virtually. Please stay healthy and safe and get your flu shot. Thank you.